Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open our session, open meeting. It looks like it's 7:06. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing for a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. And Mr. Levis, if you could notify the public of the emergency exits, please.
Sure, in case of emergency, if you want to exit the building through the doors to your rear, to either left or right, when you get up to the foyer, you can either exit to the left or to your right.
Thank you. And Mr. Florrie, if you could read the mission statement, please, for Coventry Public Schools.
The Coventry Public Schools with community partnerships educate, inspire, and motivate students to be lifelong learners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to notify the public, the school committee had an executive session starting around 6 o'clock. We went for an hour. At that time, we talked about, we discussed matters related to the Washington Oak School driveway proposal, our homeschool requests, the approval of our minutes of an executive session, SRP negotiations, impending litigation. We did take some votes, and so the votes taken were to approve the homeschool requests as presented, and the vote was five to zero, unanimous, and we also approved our executive session minutes of eight, nine, eighteen, also five to zero. That being said, is there a motion to seal the records of the executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant to Sections forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to approval of our open meetings minutes, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the open meetings of August ninth, two thousand and eighteen, August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to personnel, our reference number two. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this?
No, just as stated.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the certified administrative contract for Dr. Lynn Burke, Director of IT and Information Systems for the district, as presented.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to classified resignations. No comments? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Geraldine Baxter, regular, point-five business teacher at Coventry High School, effective August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified appointments. If you want to speak to any of these. Are you good? All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Sarah Thomas, regular, point-one, point-zero math teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to James Sheridan, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Jamie Sheridan, regular, point-five science teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to classified appointments. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to any of those? All right, is there a motion to appoint Mary Ferretti?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Mary Ferretti, four-hour slash day supervisory assistant yacht aide at Hopkins Hill Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Kimberly Friends.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Kimberly Friends, four-hour day teacher assistant inclusion at Western Coventry Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion for Melanie Fitzgerald?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Melanie Fitzgerald, three-hour day teacher assistant, pre-kindergarten, PM, at Washington Oak Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Caitlin Smith.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Caitlin Smith, four-hour day teacher assistant, intensive support ASD, at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Kathleen Fanning.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Kathleen Fanning, four-hour day teacher assistant, intensive support at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Ryan Burgess.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Ryan Burgess, four-hour day supervisory assistant yacht aide at Blackrock Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Jacques Jouel.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Jacques Jouel, four-hour day teacher assistant, intensive support, life skills at Allen Shawn Feinstein School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Alyssa Lovelace.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Alicia Lovelace, four-hour day supervisory assistant yacht aide at Blackrock Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Susan Williams.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Susan Williams, three-hour day teacher assistant, pre-kindergarten, afternoon, PM, at Washington Oak Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion for Sandy Roy?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Sandy Roy, four-hour day supervisory assistant yacht aide at Hopkins Hill Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And finally, Roxanne McGrath.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Roxanne McGrath, four-hour day supervisory assistant yacht aide at Hopkins Hill Elementary School for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Are any of those individuals here this evening? I don't think so. All right, well, our congratulations goes out to all of them. So we can move on to the public agenda, and we will entertain questions or comments from the public before any motion is made. After a motion is made, before we take a vote, we will in fact ask the public if they would like to comment, as well as any other comments they may make on any agenda items that don't require a vote. That being said, we can move on to seven, celebration of custodial and maintenance facilities and staff. Mr. Levis?
Okay.
I know you are, so we'll celebrate you.
So, we, I just spoke with Jason earlier, and I think it's before school starts, if you've been into any of our schools, and acknowledging the fact that over the last, you know, ten years, we've had a, you know, significant reduction in some of our support staff, that the custodial and maintenance staff, they've just done an outstanding job. This has been an extremely hot summer, and I've had reports from different principals. There's, this year, there were a lot of also moves being made. Mr. Wilson made presentation with the other special education administrators and talked about the moves that were going to take place around special education. Well, that all fell on to Jason and his staff, and they've done an outstanding job. So I thought tonight would be a nice night, even the people on second shift, to come in and we could, you know, celebrate them, but they're exhausted, you know? That's what, right, Jason? You said that they're, they're just, they're just really exhausted. It's at, you know, the twenty-fourth hour now, and, but, Jason, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, just on behalf of your staff, and, you know, I want to thank you. You've done an incredible job, and I know you still have more work to do, but I want to thank you.
So, I actually did speak with many of my employees and asked if they'd be interested in coming, and in addition to being exhausted, they also don't like to be the center of attention. So, I, on their behalf, and I hope that Kelly and Linda will spread the word that we appreciate what they do. I tell them regularly how much I appreciate, but if you have, and I know Craig's going to talk about it later, but if you have an opportunity to walk the buildings, there's more walls painted. I really like shiny floors and painted walls, and if you walk the schools right now, you're going to be very impressed with the age of our buildings and how sharp they look. In addition to the bathroom construction that we did at Ty Oog, and it's unbelievable to me, the amount of work that they were able to get done in the short amount of time, because my guys are all very senior, and they have vacation time. They have five weeks, some of them, and they take Mondays and Fridays, or they do whatever they can to make sure that they get some time off, but they also get as much work done as they can. So, I thank you for recognizing them, and I will make sure that I pass that on. Thank you.
Please do that. I have a little story for you. You can tell them this little story if you want. You know, I work at Brown, and it's a wonderful institution, and you would think that our, my facility floors would be scrubbed clean and shining all the time, and for years, they really weren't. And so when I started walking into the schools and seeing beautiful floors, it finally inspired me to get on my facilities, people to say, "Come on." So now I put a work request in every single start of the semester, and my floors amazingly look a lot better. So tell your guys that they inspired me to get to the bottom. I just refuse to have...
To harass you, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, I'm harassing the guys at Brown now, so, but it worked. It really did work. But obviously, we don't have to harass your guys, because they just do it, and they do an amazing, amazing job. I'm always just amazed at how clean the schools absolutely look.
It's very important that, to mention that my employees take great pride in their building and their school, and when they refer to them, they say their, their building, their classroom, their teachers, their kids, so, they do, they take great pride in what they do and who they do it for.
Yeah, please let them know that we appreciate all the work they do. I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything?
We do appreciate them, and, you know, and that's, and I'll tell you, if Craig takes a day out, you know, you can pretty much survive, but, I'm sorry, Craig, but...
You just went like this.
But, you know, if Craig takes a day out, you can survive, but if one of your guys takes a day out, it's noticed. It really is noticed, you know? There are people backing Craig up all the time, but there's no one backing up one of your guys, so. I didn't mean it the way it sounded. I really didn't. It was a compliment for them. It was really a compliment.
There's a compliment in there somewhere.
I would just like to say that somebody that's not in the buildings quite as much as, as other people, I've spent more time recently, and I've watched that high school go from what I thought was some organized chaos to spectacular. I, I mean, I'm one of those shiny floor-loving women, and people that know me, you know, know when I walk in, I'm kind of looking for the floors. These floors are unbelievable at the high school. They have done an amazing job, so those guys have worked really hard. I made sure that I went down and told them how impressed I was with the work that they've done, like, very, very impressive. In a very short amount of time, they've turned around a very large building.
Any other comments? Anybody from the public? Just spread the good word. Thank you. Moving on to number eight, which is the second reading of our use of school facilities. It was our reference number three. Did we want to dispense with the second reading, first of all?
Yes.
Make a motion for dispense.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody...
Yeah, we'll discuss the policy. We don't have to discuss them.
I make a motion to dispense with, Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the use of skills, use of school facilities policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the actual approval of that policy, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the use of school facilities policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Are there any concerns from the committee or questions on that policy as written? Everybody's good? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to number nine. Do we want to talk about this at all?
So, it's part of the process where the committee has approved the job descriptions along with administrator contracts. We had, and these administrative contracts were in the policy manual, so we're just now going in, actually at our policy subcommittee meeting at four o'clock, Mr. Pearson and Dr. Dixon voted on these policies to be rescinded, and we went through and matched up to make sure that the policies were rescinding were replaced by the policies that were approved, I mean, the contracts that were approved with the job description. So, everything's in order, and...
All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to rescind the job description for administrative policies. Two-one-four-zero, school attendance officer, number two-one-two-oh, assistant superintendent from instruction, number two-one-two-oh, K to twelve, one, one to K, one to K to twelve...
The second policy is point one.
Oh, two-one-two-oh, point one, K to twelve, curriculum coordinator, number two-one-three-oh, director of business and finance, number two-one-three-one, administrative assistant to director of business and finance, number two-one-three-two, director of personnel, number two-one-three-five, director of fiscal plan, number two-one-three-five, point one, assistant director of fiscal plan, number two-two-one-zero, school principal, number two-two-one-zero, point one-A, assistant elementary school principal, number two-two-one, point one, point, number two-two-one-oh, point one-B, assistant secretary, assistant secondary school principal. Next, two-two-one-zero, point two, assistant director of West Bay Vocational Technical School. Next, number two-two-one-zero, point three, director of student services. Last, two-two-one-zero, point four, athletic director.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you so much for rescinding all of those. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And Mr. Anderson, did you want me to bring anything up on the agenda? I can't remember. I know you said to me last night, but I can't remember. I was looking and trying to figure...
It's coming up, we're...
Yeah, we're tabling a bunch of stuff, so I guess we can just go. All right, so we're good, because we're going to table number ten...
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just say something?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you again.
Again, no.
Every time we rescind these and get new ones, I always have to thank...
Hallelujah, right?
Yes, the policy committee, because it's been a long time coming.
So, I measured the policy manual, which is about this thick.
How thick is it now?
We just got rid of a quarter inch.
That's...
That's better than nothing.
That's awesome.
I can't wait till we get a new policy manual that you can give us.
Electronically.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Well, we were able to rescind these policies because the content is really incorporated into their contract, which we approved during the meeting.
That makes sense, yep.
So, thank you all for approving those.
No problem. So, we're going to rescind number eleven, number twelve, and we're going to go to number thir, I mean, not rescind, I meant table. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, and we can go to fourteen if you want, use of impact fees. Our reference number eight, and then we'll go back to the school lunch. Mr. Anderson and I believe Ms. Mandrelli are on, okay, and that was our reference number three, guys?
No, you referenced number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong.
Am I on now?
If I get the wearing contact.
Okay, so, as you know, last year, we completed stage one, which is the ride requirement in order to receive housing aid reimbursement, which, as of last year, Coventry would have received fifty-five percent on any projects that we had done, had we had a completed application. We now need to move forward to stage two. This is kind of pressing in a couple of matters. One, because we're on extension, we have until November fifteenth to get the stage two done, otherwise, we have to start the process over again. And also, this new requirement from a maintenance of effort for maintenance on your facilities, it will be very tough for us to come up with this money every year if we're not getting that fifty-five percent reimbursement going. So, again, once we get started, we'll get half of our money back that we can then turn around and reinvest back into the, into the buildings. So, in, in order to move forward, one of the requirements is a feasibility study and a master educational plan in stage two. That has to be done by an architect. A lot of districts hire somebody to do stage one. We did it ourselves here, and it still got approved, but we have to hire consultants going forward. We did talk with the town about using impact fees. There's about a hundred of them this year to, for architectural studies. I know Mr. Anderson can jump in, but in short, we are permitted to use those impact fees so long as we complete a project. So, most of the projects that we submitted in stage one, there's nothing extravagant. A lot of it is updating, a lot of our failing systems, so I don't think that anything on that list is something that we couldn't complete within five years, but if we don't complete those projects, we do have to reimburse that impact fund. We're reimbursing ourselves, so to speak, but it goes back into the fund to be used for a future school project. So that's kind of the catch with that, so we will have to make this a priority going through budget process, that we do actually have to spend money on maintaining our, our buildings and not just cleaning, you know, really maintaining our systems and repairing and upgrading them. So, the most, the request is for you to authorize us to use impact fees to hire the architect so that we can continue on with stage two. Usually, we bring forward the exact dollar amount. I will be tabling the agenda item about recommending a contract for two reasons. One, we are still going through the contracts, and we're also looking at some on the state bid list. And two, before we recommended bringing a name forward, we kind of need to get an idea that the, the committee is going to support using these funds in order to get this process started.
And I will say, I have spoken with Mr. Goran, and Mr. Goran and I agree that you can use funds from the impact fee fund, provided that the project that you use the architect for is a project that you actually complete. So if you were, for example, to use those funds, to have the architect to tennis, to design tennis courts to put on the roof of Hopkins Hill, and then you decided not to build those tennis courts on the roof, you would have to pay that money back into the fund. But for the type of projects that Ms. Mandrelli has described, all of which you really have to complete to continue to operate your buildings in a safe manner, that should not be an issue.
Seems like a win-win to me. Are there any questions from any committee, committee members? Mr. Pearson?
Just to clarify that last point, Mr. Anderson, so say there are five projects, and we only complete one of them, we'd have to refund the amount of money spent...
and we only complete one of them, we'd have to refund the amount of money spent for...
The money that was spent for the architectural designs for the other four, you only complete one out of the five. The answer to that is yes. You do have to pay the money.
Whatever it is.
If you can't go spend money and have an architect draw, draw up Taj Mahal and then not build it, if you don't build it, you have to pay it back.
But we have five years to do it.
Yes.
So hopefully that's doable.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I was hoping we'd find some money somehow for architect phase two, so. Um, any other questions from the committee? Anything from the public?
If, one, more of a point. I don't remember what's on the stage one application, could you, someone send me a copy of that electronically at some point, so I don't have to dig for it.
I can send it over.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Could we all get a copy?
Yeah, we'll send it over, yeah. Cool. All right. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Madam Chair, make a motion to use impact fees for the payment to the architect for the architectural feasibility study and master plan as required under Rhode Island Department of Education's stage two application.
I second the motion.
Any questions again from the committee? Anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and he opposed, the ayes haven't, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Yeah, and so, um, we're going to move to school lunch. Our agenda item number thirteen, which was our reference seven.
Yes. So, so part of the school lunch process that we do every year is a required USDA price lunch equity calculation. My package just fell apart, hold on. And really what that's looking at is it's looking at all the revenue sources, federal commodities, state reimbursement for breakfast and lunch, um, the sales prices that are collected and the cost of the program. And then a calculation is determined to say what the prices should be. Uh, we've been teetering on the edge for the past several years, which isn't overly surprising because we've been running a deficit as well. Um, and this year, the price equity came back that we should be increasing our prices by twenty cents, our paid lunches by twenty cents. Uh, USDA only requires a ten percent increase if we're going to do an increase, or we have to come up with local funds to offset that school lunch program. Um, and looking at some of the surrounding districts, we'll kind of be in the middle of the road somewhat on the higher, depending on the, depending on the community. I have reached out because I know Exeter, West Greenwich, as an example, they had almost the same prices as us. So I, I reached out to the finance director there to see if he failed the price equity calc as well. Again, they have a little bit different setup in their, um, operations for school lunch than we do. But in short, we, um, do need to look at an increase. So I have on here proposed ten cent increase. I did not want to go up the twenty cents, uh, for two reasons. One, we are switching companies, we're changing some of the operational structure. We know that we have to do a minimal increase, um, but we'll have to do this calculation again next year. So if we're not required to go up the full twenty cents to charge our students, I'd rather not do that because there's a chance that if we're successful this year, we might not have to re-increase that extra ten cents. Uh, so as of right now, this is, this would be the recommendation going forward. So you can see what the current prices were for seventeen, eighteen, and then the ten cent increase for paid lunch, uh, for elementary and secondary.
Any questions for Sarah? Good. All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to increase the school lunch paid meals prices for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year due to the failing of the USDA price lunch equity calculation as follows. Elementary paid lunch increase from two dollars fifty cents to two dollars sixty cents. Secondary paid lunch increase from two dollars eighty-five cents to two dollars ninety-five cents.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the public? Concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and he opposed, the ayes haven't, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Sarah. All right, moving on to commitment of funds, our reference number nine.
Yes.
Guess that's you again.
Yes, me again. So, uh, again, this is going back to the school lunch and this is really just a formality. Um, you have a spending policy which aligns with Gatsby fifty-four, which came out. Basically what it does is it, uh, gives us the ability to restrict portions of our fund balance. I have the ability to do that as the finance director, which is an assignment. Again, that can be overturned at any time, um, and done throughout the year. Uh, that's a lot of times what we do. If we know we have big expenses coming, then I kind of just set that aside and, you know, in paper, um, and you'll see it at the end of the fiscal year on the financial statements. Then there's a commitment, which is an actual vote, and then there's other classifications such as non-spendable things that you can't touch for legal, legal reasons. Uh, because we will be transferring money from the general fund to cover the school lunch deficit, which we are required to do, and now again, we have Aramark leaving, so we'll make that transfer from the general fund. Um, I'm asking that you take a vote to commit funds as of July first, twenty eighteen. We don't have the final balance, um, we thought we did, and then I just received another stack of invoices from a milk company the other day, so I sent that off to Aramark to make sure that all of those were included as well. Um, but really what you're just doing is committing those funds officially to move them to the school lunch fund to pay off that, um, that deficit. At the end of the year, for the June thirtieth, twenty eighteen financial statements, you'll see me assigning that, which is just my recommendation to assign that because it is a FY eighteen activity, but we'll be actually making the payment in FY nineteen. Um, as of right now, I know the last report I did two weeks ago, which was before we had that final statement from Aramark, was around three hundred thousand. It is up at about four hundred fifteen thousand right now because we ran a deficit again this year and we had some tough situations come in, whenever you have storms, school closings, um, it's very hard to recoup those sales in the summer months. Uh, usually your best eating time is, you know, of the cooler months, not when it's super hot in the buildings and whatnot. So when you have a lot of snow days or closed, closed days, it's really tough to recoup that for any, any school lunch company. Um, so I will bring forward the final balance. I know I keep saying I'm hoping, but the, the timing of the cutoff is, is tough to make sure everything's in. But this is again, more the formality, and your policy does allow you to commit the funds and then assign the exact dollar amount at a future date.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say.
Are we saying that we owe four hundred fifteen thousand dollars?
To Aramark, yes.
To Aramark.
Yes.
And do they charge us interest for all this money that we owed them through the years?
So again, this is what, the balance, it went back from about two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine is when it came over. That was the last time there was a school lunch company switch. I believe it went from Chartwells to Aramark. There was a large balance owed to, uh, Chartwells at the time. And what Aramark did is they basically didn't collect payment from the district for the first six months. So about three hundred and fifteen thousand of that had been carried since two thousand nine. In some years, they did waive finance charges and some years they did not. So we looked at about, um, a total finance charge that's still hitting our account of about ten thousand dollars. Um, we'll go back and forth once we have that final settlement to see if we can waive that ten grand, but also looking that we've owed this money to Aramark since two thousand nine. So ten grand in, in finance charges is a relatively fair amount to have been charged with a balance that's carried that long. And unfortunately, the years that we carried, uh, that we incurred deficits, we obviously couldn't make additional payments on that initial balance that carried forward. So that's certainly not an FY eighteen balance due. Um, and we did recognize close to three hundred thousand dollars last year on the financial statements of that liability.
So what are we going to be able to do moving forward into this school year to make sure that we don't incur a debt again, and we don't build up the debt?
So one of the things that we started to do with Aramark when I came on is having regular meetings to look at the operations at the schools. Um, we are looking at changing some of the policies and enforcing some of the policies about, um, bad debts, although I know that that gets a rap, a bad rap, but the, the student balances owed. It looks like in total, there, there was about twenty thousand dollars in student balances that were owed, which is high, but that certainly doesn't make up the full, you know, eighty thousand dollar deficit. As you know, we brought forward a recommendation to you that had a break even the past three years. Aramark has come forward with a guaranteed deficit. Um, so right off the bat, we're hoping that we will follow through with the guaranteed, um, break even amount that SEDEXO has brought through. That was one of the big, the big reasons that we did recommend a change because we couldn't in good conscience continue to bring forward a guaranteed deficit. They did make adjustments to staffing for that. Um, they are looking at kind of having a revamping of marketing and product demos and trying to get a little bit more engagement going on throughout the schools. Um, but again, we have a one-year contract with them and I did make that clear to SEDEXO, we cannot continue to operate at an eighty thousand dollar deficit every single year. So my, if we get through the year and we're continuing to struggle, my recommendation come spring will be that we go back out to bid again.
Thank you. Anybody else? I guess we're ready to move. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to commit general fund, fund balance for the payment to Aramark for balances owed in the school lunch fund as of July first, two thousand eighteen, in accordance with school committee, school committee policy, number three zero five zero.
Second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and he opposed, the ayes haven't, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, moving on to seventeen, the school building capital fund application. Mr. Lewis passing some things down to you guys?
So this was, um, the application itself was both in Mrs., uh, Ms. Mandrelli's, uh, report, last school committee meeting, and then I had handed it out separately. I think, I believe I just also emailed it to the committee, uh, a few days ago, and I've also attached it here. I also mentioned at the last meeting that I was going to request to go before the town council, uh, for a discussion around this. So the governors that has, uh, through the school building authority, put ten point five million dollars, and, uh, there's, uh, the application, there's two, uh, two stipulate, or two, two ways to go through the application. One is that you front the money up front, you put the money up front for the project and, um, you get reimbursed by, uh, the school building authority. And the second one is that you could actually take a loan for the project. Um, you know, if we had housing aid, we could utilize that. We don't have any capital. So my, my intent is, I put before you, um, some school safety projects. I'll, I'll speak a little bit later on, but under school safety, but, uh, many people here, Ms. Andrews, Ms. Mandrelli, um, Mr. Martin, supported a, a COPS grant that we discussed before, where we put in some, we put in a request to the police department for, um, surveillance cameras within our buildings, outside our buildings. Um, what we'd like to do here is, is pursue this if we can receive some funds that'll allow us to, uh, under the school safety projects, the intercom systems, um, in that report that I shared with you by Secure City, I talked about both of these. So we have the, uh, the, the estimates from Geva Barrage from Save Our City for the intercom systems, and you can see for our schools, it's a total of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The second, uh, project would be the strobe light systems, and in case of emergency, we have many areas in our, our larger buildings where, um, the intercoms don't work, in, in the career tech center, like in the, uh, in, in some of our classrooms, whether welding or automotive, outside in the fields, uh, in the gym. And so we have different areas that we've identified for strobe light systems. Sonatrol's come out, they've given us quotes, so you can see what the estimates are, or the quotes are for the total cost of strobe light systems, or twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars. And under this grant, we'd be able to secure up to five hundred thousand dollars. So my intent is to, uh, and we did get on the agenda, I had sent an email out. I received a call today, actually, uh, Ms. Mandrelli said to me that Mr. Wazika was looking for me, so I, I, um, I contacted him and he said that we are on the agenda as close to, to, you know, in the beginning. And it's just a discussion. I, I'd like to present this and, and we've talked about this, but we need to start a dialogue with the town council. We need to start coming up with a plan. You know, we've talked, myself and the Colonel, we, we know there's a lot that's gone on and, 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 you know, Mr. Wazika is the acting town manager, he's the acting finance director, and he's, I'm sure he's still their tech director. And, um, you know, I, what I, my intent is to have a conversation with them and just to be thinking about, is there a way for us to come up with some funds? An example is that we've been looking for over a year. We know that there's cell phone tower money, and we know that while we were getting certain amount every year, there's money in there that should be allocated to the schools. The challenge is to figure out how much, you know, at, in two thousand and eleven, how much money should have gone to the schools, but because they, my understanding is they lumped it together. So I'm not asking them for coming up with some new cash. There's money sitting there, and would they be willing to give us some funds that we could use? Even if we could do half of this, even if we could do a quarter of it, it's a beginning. And, um, I think in good faith, it's a way to have a dialogue, and that's what I'm hoping to have. If, if there's a way that they're willing to look into this as a committee, as a council, then we could go back. This application is due September twenty-first, I believe. So we could, in theory, go back to another council meeting and then have a conversation where they could actually vote on some funds. We don't have, the only money that we have right now is our impact fees, and we need to use that for a feasibility study. And so, again, I'm not going to try to leverage the council, I want to have a, a, a conversation and, and a dialogue, and, um, you know, we all know how important safety is. Um, but the reality is, we have not had capital outside of bond and outside of the money that's been allocated for technology, going back, it appears like ten years, that we can see in terms of the records, you know, Jason may know better, but, um, we, it's not sustainable. And, you know, we're talking about how important safety is and, and, you know, I don't want to be the only district around that's not, you know, when, when people come and say, why haven't you gone for this money? I, I want to, you know, do everything we can do, and that's why, to go to the council with a potential solution about, let's look at that cell phone tower money and it's, and, and could we tap into some of that those funds, knowing that we'll get a reimbursement? So that's, that's my plan. Like I said, I, I feel that we have to take some action, and again, I, the reason, and, you know, Ms. Mandrelli and I talked about it, we think that the best plan is to go and just have a discussion on Monday night. And I wasn't sure that we were on the agenda till we got, received the phone call today. So I appreciate, uh, Mr. President Shibley and, and Mr. Wazika getting us on the agenda. So I'm open, you know, any questions?
Now, is Mr. Anderson going to be there?
I, he, I don't believe he'll be at the, uh, the Monday night meeting.
Wouldn't it be prudent for Mr. Anderson to be there? Because it's obvious that we're owed money and... Do we have to take legal action to get the money that we need?
So, so my suggestion, Dave, is that, that's exactly what I don't want to do because I'm, I want to, you know, I want to go and have a dialogue and, and if they, you know, I'm hoping that they'll have a dialogue and I'm, it's called a positive presupposition. I'm going in there assuming that we'll have a dialogue. I don't want to put Mr. Anderson in that position. We've had dialogue back and forth. We actually had, you know, in fairness, there's not a town manager, there's an acting interim town manager, and Mr. Wazika, I think, is doing a fantastic job, but he has three roles. There hasn't been a full-time town manager, um, there hasn't been a full-time finance director, and when we received this package, there was a full-time, uh, permanent town manager and a permanent finance director. So we received all the documents, right, all the different contracts, a big box to sort through. But without the historical knowledge, it's really hard, um, to make sense of what these documents mean and where money, especially if money went into a pool and then it was reallocated, it's hard to, to, you know, and that's, that, that's something that was shared with me, whether that's true or not, that's, it's anecdotal, but that's information that was shared with us at some point. So I believe just to go and have a dialogue, again, to set it up to have a discussion first, and then to go back to get on the council again and, and then try to allo-, you know, see if there's a way that they could allocate some funds so we could do some of these projects. I, I, I don't, you know, I, that, that way hasn't seemed to work for many people, and I, I definitely want to take the high road and go and have a conversation and a dialogue. So, and I don't feel like that's, that's not how we would put Mr. Anderson in a spot anyways publicly, so.
Is Mr. Gorham going to be there?
What's the town council?
I know, Dave, you're welcome to call, contact, you're, you're elected official, you're welcome to contact the, uh, the council and see. I, I know we're showing up, that's what I do know.
Okay. Well, I just think it's prudent, if you're going to have, if, if they're going to have the council there and with their attorney, I just think it's a, it's prudent to have our attorney there as well. That, that's all.
That, that's all I'm saying. Not to have an argument with them, but just so we have a professional attorney there to explain to the council the need for this. That's all. To, to back you up and to back Sarah up, that's all I'm saying. Because I've seen what, I've witnessed what happens when he's not there, and it's, it's, it's not pretty. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Flora, any other comments? We're good. And I, I believe you're on the schedule, Donna, to be at that meeting. I will be at that meeting as well, so if, let me know if you want me to do the report. Okay?
I know. You know how much I love that.
Just to add, I did confirm with RIDE today, because we don't have an application on file.
Yep.
Typically, with projects like this, we wouldn't be eligible for the housing aid reimbursement. However, if we say that this is an emergency, safety concern, because of the nature of the money and that they want this to be used, we can apply to the commissioner to get our fifty-five percent back. So, we don't have a lot of options like that to get fifty-five percent back right now until we get through all of these stages. So, again, this might be something that we do kind of want to encourage the council to partake with us because, again, until we get that application done, we, we wouldn't get any reimbursement.
And we don't have any shovel-ready projects, yeah.
But on this, we can, if we apply and if we say that it's an emergency for safety concerns, which I would think a non-working system in the gym would qualify as a safety concern.
Right.
Emergency safety concern.
Okay. I look forward to the discussion, that's for sure. And I think it's very worthy. Hopefully, we'll get somewhere with it. That being said, let's move on to subcommittee updates on number eighteen. Are there any subcommittee updates?
So, we, we put that on, I think we had a discussion that we would just put that on.
In general?
In general, that if a, a subcommittee wanted to, you know.
Talk about anything.
Right, like, we, for instance, we just had the policy subcommittee, it was our fifty-sixth meeting.
Something along the lines.
Pardon?
Somewhere along there.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're.
That's a lot.
It was in the fifties.
But who's keeping track?
We're not, yes, we are keeping track.
Obviously, you are, it's fifty-six.
The only thing I think I can say is that the, the first meeting for the career and technical education policy subcommittee has been posted on the open meetings, Secretary of State's website, so I believe that's coming up on the twenty-eighth, is it?
Yes, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Six to eight in the green room at the elementary high school.
Where is the green room? Is that that?
Is that the old Montiel?
Not at all.
Next to the.
Library, right, on the entrance to the library.
It's green.
Yeah, it's green, next to the library.
Entrance to the library.
Oh, okay.
Next to the library.
Yeah, that's the study area.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was going to try to find out what the, I didn't know. Good, okay. So, I guess we're good, and you can move on to your report.
So, I'll jump around here. The high school principal update that the screening committee met this week, I lose track of days, but it was this week, maybe Wednesday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, sorry, Don. Didn't see you there. So, Don Coward is chairing that. I know several people in this room were at that meeting, and that they've set dates for the initial interviews, correct? And those dates are the first week of September?
September fifth and September sixth, getting on the panel.
Right. So, so the process is moving along, and we'll keep you posted, and hopefully have another update at the, the next school committee meeting.
Who are the, who are the participants on the interview panel?
Just. Variety of different individuals that we've put.
It's like thirteen of us. When we put the panel together, we tried to get constituents from all different parts of the high schools, from his teachers, his, his parents, his student, there are people from different departments, S R P, central office, administrators from other buildings, so we're trying to bring a pretty well-run group together.
Good. Thank you.
In your packet is a letter, reference number ten. It's from the renowned family court truancy program. It's Magistrate Angela Paulus, and she writes a, a great letter every year.
So nice.
But she thanks a, a lot of different individuals.
Yeah.
In that, and I think that she does an outstanding job and really tries to be therapeutic, not punitive. I know Lori attends those meetings at the middle school and the high school, the administrators from the high school attend, our resource officer, Mr. Pendola, Rich Pendola, his sister Kathy attends, Mr. Chuck Jones attends. So, we have, you know, a very active involvement, and she's a great resource to our community, but I, I just wanted to share that letter with you. I also included a reference, it's a brief overview, but it's of the seven challenges. There is more in-depth, and I can share that through email with the committee just to talk more about it, and as we get closer to implementation, we'll make sure we share that information with you. The opening of schools, you know, we talked about it tonight with the work that Jason's done, and, and our teachers are in there setting up classrooms, and there, our schools are very active places. I'm concerned, though, again, next week, it's looking like it's going to be in the nineties for opening, and, you know, our schools are just not designed for this, this weather, and, you know, I'll probably send out something to teachers again, just to say, you know, make sure that people, you know, I, we receive, and not from teachers, I received a lot of complaints from families last year, and, and there's nothing, you know, I don't know what to do around it. I mean, obviously, if it was a hundred degrees for several days in those buildings, we'd have to do something, but it's just, we have old buildings and just the design, you know, we have some areas that are, we have a couple of areas in the high school that, that have air conditioning, and they're too cold, we can't regulate it. But most of the areas are just extremely hot, so I'll be notifying teachers, and if, depending on what the temperature is, I'll make sure that I let them know to, to be comfortable and, and students and families, but it's just, unfortunately, that's our reality. But I think we're, we're in good shape, and I, I do want to have a tour. I know it's finding the time and trying to figure out how we can get people together, and even if I have to do it separately or individually, but I'd love for the committee to go and, and just, we don't have to visit every school, we can visit different schools, but I think it, you know, it validates the work. We can talk about it, we could take pictures and show, but I feel, and it's also important, I think people see you in the schools and seeing, you know, they, you know, our schools may be old, and, and we have issues in, in our infrastructure, but people work really hard to, to, to take care of the spaces we have, and, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I think it's important for you as a committee to see that. And then the last thing is around school safety. You know, we, we did put in this, this COPs grant through the police, and I appreciate, and I thank the police department for their, their continuous support. We'll see if we get funded for that, that would help us with some of the surveillance cameras, but again, I'm really hoping that we can work with the town council to get some resources because we won't have this opportunity again. And I'm hoping that we can continue to, to do that. Jason is working with the, the police department again to provide the Alice training, that'll be provided to, this, we're focusing right now, we'll have the middle school taken care of in the beginning of the school year, and we'll continue that process with our, with our other schools. Many of our teachers and, at the middle school, they've done their, their training online prior, and, you know, fortunately, based on the, the language that we put into the new contract, that's an opportunity, it's a win-win for everybody in terms of the professional development, doing it independently, so I, I want to thank the union for that, too. So, that's, that's my report. If anybody has any questions, feel free to.
I don't have any questions, but I just did want to make sure that the committee did look at that chart of the students and see the changes when their attendance went up, or they had less, you know, tag, less out of school days. There was some dramatic improvements on some of these, these students, so that was really wonderful to see, so.
We see some incredible.
Amazing.
Yeah.
So, I, I was, I love, I loved seeing that, quite frankly, because it was really nice to see that, that it did make such a difference. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Outside of that, any questions for the superintendent? Anything from the public? Okay. We can move on to twenty, which is the chairperson's report, and I don't have anything to report. And we can go to citizens' comments. Any comments from the citizens gathered? All right. Doesn't seem to be, so I can have a motion, if I could have a motion for scheduling the next meeting, that would be wonderful.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, September thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM at Coventry High School.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Thank you all for attending, and it's only eight o'clock.